Thank you. For all present today, please note that the meeting is being livestreamed on the NCPC website. We do have a quorum, and so we'd like to call the meeting to order. And if there's no objection, we'll proceed with the open agenda, the open session for the agenda as has been advertised. I will note that today's agenda is a little lighter than was planned. We have two items that were pulled from the agenda, one being the information presentation on the Eisenhower Memorial, an update, the second being the Naval Research Laboratory draft master plan. So those that had previously been advertised or not on the agenda today, they'll be back at a later meeting. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I have two items to note. One, we have with us today Mr. Michael Rhodes, who is the Director of Administration and Management at the Department of Defense, and Mr. Rhodes is Secretary Hagel's principal designee to the commission, and so we welcome him. We're also pleased to have our old friend back, Mike McGill, representing the GSA. The second item to note is that just today, and the reason we're starting a few minutes late, as we had noted previously, is that at noon today, the National Capitol Planning Commission had a speaker series over at the National Archives, just a block or two away, and it was on Washington's Civil War forts and parks in commemorating the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Fort Stevens. We heard from three panelists. First, Dr. Franklin Kooling, who is an historian and author and a professor of history at the National Defense University. We also heard from Loretta Newman, who is Vice President for the Alliance to Preserve the Civil War defenses of Washington, and also from Kim Elder, who is the Program Manager with the National Park Service for the Civil War defenses of Washington. It was a terrific program, and it should be, you will find it on YouTube, and it also likely is to be aired this weekend on C-SPAN. So that includes the chairman's report. Is there any questions? Hearing none. Agenda item number two is the Executive Director's report, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. Now, welcome, Mr. Rhodes, and welcome back, Mr. McGill, to the commission. We're going to have a slightly different presentation today. I'd like to spend some time going over our Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, which is a new thing that we're rolling out this month. But before I do that, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce four summer associates who have just joined our agency. First of all, we have Tori Campbell. Tori has just completed her first year of law school at the University of Michigan, where her interest extends to urban planning and historic preservation law, and she is working in our Office of General Counsel. Secondly, we have Julian Nepomuchena. Sorry if I pronounced it the wrong way. And she's entering her final year at the University of California, Berkeley, in the Architecture Program, and she is working with us in our Office of Public Engagement. We also have two associates who have joined the Office of the Secretariat through the D.C. Summer Youth Employment Program. Jasmine Turner is a rising sophomore, majoring in environmental sciences at the University of the District of Columbia. We also have Michelle Williams, and she joins us, and she also plans to attend the University of the District of Columbia as a sociology major. So we welcome you all to NCPC. I'd also like to note that our urban planner, Will Herbig, has left NCPC to join the Markle Foundation in New York City as their new Deputy Director of Communications. So we wish him well in his new endeavors up in the Big Apple. This month, as I mentioned, NCPC, along with our partners at the National Park Service, General Services Administration in the District of Columbia, is launching our new Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. And I'd also like to ask our project manager, Sarah Moulton, to provide the commission with a short overview of this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name's Sarah Moulton. I'm an urban planner with NCPC's Physical Planning Division, and I'm here today to update the commission on a collaborative initiative to articulate a vision and a role for Pennsylvania Avenue in our 21st century capital. And first, I need to open PowerPoint. So Pennsylvania Avenue is one of the most historic thoroughfares in the world. It's guided by the Lawton-McMillan plans, as you're well aware of, and it's served many roles over time, from a rural thoroughfare to a bustling entertainment district and really everything in between. It's been the backdrop to our nation's celebrations and our sorrows, and it's also seen a significant amount of revitalization over the years. Forty years ago, the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation, or PADC, was formed by Congress to direct millions of dollars in public and private reinvestment back into the street. After decades of neglect, a steady flow of residents moving to the suburbs and a nine-to-five use dominating the entire south side of the avenue, this place was in really bad shape. Buildings were literally boarded up here. But the PADC developed a plan and square guidelines to carefully restructure the avenue into a place that would balance the needs of both the nation and the city. Commemorative sites were established alongside high-density office, federal and residential buildings. And today, the success of the avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods, it's really the direct result of that PADC plan. The corporation, though, was dissolved in 1996, and responsibilities to continue enforcing that plan and maintain the avenue were given to the National Park Service, General Services Administration, and NCPC. And the road itself is under the jurisdiction of DDOT. Over the two decades that the corporation was in existence, it leveraged $150 million in public funds to generate $1.5 billion in private development along the avenue. It's a pretty big success. But the plan was developed forty years ago, and it really doesn't reflect another number of existing conditions that have changed along the avenue. First and foremost, there's no longer a PADC. So we now have multiple federal and local jurisdictions, a bid as well, and private landholders that are operating and maintaining the avenue. And without one single voice advocating for and guiding investments and upkeep of the avenue, maintaining it at a level consistent with that of PADC times has been pretty challenging. Thirdly, D.C., just like many other American cities, has experienced a sort of a renaissance downtown over the past ten years. So we have other areas like Center Cities, you see up here, K Street, they've really become the address to have. So in other words, Pennsylvania Avenue has some competition these days. So given these issues, NCPC, GSA, NPS, and the district have determined that now is the time to act. We've guided and invited agencies with jurisdiction along the avenue to form a steering committee that guides the solutions to many of these challenges. We want them to develop a work plan to implement improvements along the avenue, and most importantly, we need to determine what the function and role of the avenue is in our 21st century capital city. So the idea of the initiative began a few years ago, as NPS began work on their environmental assessment, which is now a management plan for the avenue. And it was clear that the challenges that were along the avenue really reached beyond the responsibilities of NPS. So we had to extend the conversation to NCPC, GSA, the city, others that all recognized the need to establish kind of a collaborative effort to discuss and solve these issues. So we've set up two levels of agency input. Top level is a steering committee, and its purpose is really to provide guidance and input on the key decisions that we have to make along the way. Below that, we have four working groups. They will be staffed by all the agencies, and they focus on the topic areas listed here. They will lead really the development and implementation of that work plan for the initiative. And there will likely be times that those groups need to work together to solve and untangle many of the problems on the avenue. So we have three main purposes for the avenue and the initiative itself. The steering committee is really going to address near-term needs, develop a long-term vision for the avenue and its relationship to the surrounding neighborhoods, and really identify a framework to govern this moving forward. And we anticipate that the initiative will answer a lot of questions, questions that are out there today. They include how can the avenue bridge the national and local needs? How can the economic vitality of the avenue be improved? And how can the avenue be a more engaging place on a day-to-day basis? So the agencies responsible for the avenue recognize that there are some key issues that we must collectively address. So we've begun to break them down into those four working group topics that you saw on an earlier slide, and there's certainly a bit of overlap there. The first issue, though, deals with operations and maintenance. The infrastructure and furnishings along the avenue are aging. So much of the streetscape elements are at the end of their life cycle, and the replacements are no longer available, just as an example, the pavers. The second issue deals with governance. The jurisdictional boundaries here are very complicated, and this map only identifies four of them. The red dotted line is the PADC boundary. The solid blue line is the Historic Site District. The darker blue shaded area is the Responsibility of NPS. That's what they maintain and operate. And the dotted white line is the roadway that DDOT is responsible for maintaining. So if you add another layer to this, agencies like the National Gallery of Art and Archives maintain outdoor space. So do other places, like the Canadian Embassy and the museum. So you have multiple jurisdictions here working together to maintain one avenue, and a lot of times, it gets very complicated. Third issue deals with animation along the street, or programming, or street life activation. Events are really on the rise, which is fantastic, but the process to approve them and implement them is really convoluted. So on weekends, a lot of times during the nicer months, you'll see Pennsylvania Avenue very well activated. We have fundraisers, cultural events, demonstrations, you know, you name it, it's out there, which is great. And permitting for commercial activities like cafes, they're also on the rise, too. But the policies that are guiding the permitting and implementation of those activities, it's downright confusing. We have an overlap of local and national agencies, discrepancies between policies, and those really need to be resolved. Last but not least, there are planning and design issues. As I mentioned earlier, the PADC plan was developed forty years ago, which made incredibly positive changes to the avenue, but the plan itself hasn't really been revisited in decades. So how do we ensure security for federal facilities is effective while also providing benefits to the public realm? The plan doesn't really talk about that. It also doesn't talk about how to incorporate sustainable design practices into the landscape. There are now more downtown residents, which is fantastic. How do we better accommodate their needs? And last but not least, how do we solidify that economic vitality of the avenue for the next 20 years? And honestly, that's what it comes down to, is the economic vitality. The Trust for Public Land released a study in 2009 documenting the benefits a park brings to nearby property values, and they found that if a park is well-maintained, it can increase those values from 5% to 15%, depending upon the quality. It's also important to note, though, that the value of the property can decrease if the park is not properly maintained. So there are many other benefits to well-functioning public realms, personal health, tourism earnings, sustainable and stormwater management practices. But the basic takeaway here is this: when the public realm is well-maintained, when it's lively and safe and active, the adjacent building owners really benefit from that increased property value. And the city benefits, too, with greater tax benefits and tax revenue. That can be reinvested back into that park, and so you increase the activity and the maintenance, and it's a good cycle to be in. So what's at risk if we don't look at these issues holistically? Well, if the avenue is not maintained and improved to higher standards, there is a risk of loss in economic strength. And today, we really need a competitive avenue that benefits the city and the nation. So today, the avenue is at a transition point. There is some serious competition in the city these days, as I mentioned earlier. Hotspots have moved to places like Noma and City Center. And there are 13 Class A office buildings along Penn Avenue today. They're currently being leased at a rate of about $671 a square foot. Compare that with the downtown bid area, which is generally Massachusetts Avenue to the north, Pennsylvania Avenue to the south, 15th and 16th Street on the west, and Union Station on the east. So that area generally averages about $755 a square foot. So it's a little bit of a difference there. Take another stat. Thirty-nine percent of that office space is leased by law firms, and four of them will be moving soon. So right now, the vacancy rate for the avenue is 11.6%, which is below the average for the bid, a little bit above the average for the city at 10.8%. But if those four firms leave and new tenants aren't found, the vacancy rate could go as high as 21.8%. So I don't think anyone wants to see that. Now, there are many positive changes happening along the avenue, too. The old post office, you all are very familiar with, a $200 million redevelopment project into a luxury hotel and conference center. FBI may be relocating, which would open up the possibility to redevelop the existing headquarters site. 1301 E Street, a private site, is going to be redeveloped into an investment of about $100 million into that building. National Theater will have new programming and operational improvements. And Pershing Park, there's legislation in Congress now to make this the official National World War I memorial, so there may be opportunities for improvements at that park, too. So we're at the very beginning now of a multi-year effort, and we plan to use a three-phase approach for this initiative. Right now, we're in phase one, which is essentially the scoping. We're developing a work plan for the effort. It's going to include near- and long-term elements, and the steering committee met in May and are meeting again tomorrow to provide input to develop that work plan. A draft will be presented at the steering committee meeting in September for discussion, and we'll also have an aspiration statement that will guide the initiative's long-term vision. So we plan to return to the commission later this year with an update on these items. The next phase, we'll begin to tackle near-term needs along the avenue, and phase three, we'll really focus more on our long-term actions. So the steering committee's decisions to articulate the role and function of the avenue, it won't just be a conversation between local and federal agencies. We recognize the need to have a robust public outreach and focus group effort, and that's what we're building right now. We want to reach residents, tourists, the business community, and many others, and we anticipate this to be an ongoing conversation that will grow along with the initiative's efforts. So right now, our project website is up and running. We plan to use this to engage in interactive online discussions and find out more ways that we can improve the avenue and track progress. So we anticipate that to be a two-way street for information. We also plan to host a public workshop on July 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here at NCPC. It's going to be an open-house format. We'll have a brief presentation similar to what I gave today. And during the workshop, we'd like to hear ideas on the challenges and opportunities that exist along the avenue, as well as kind of some key ideas that the public thinks should be included in the initiative's aspiration statement. We're also beginning to coordinate focus group meetings with stakeholders. Topics include tourism and culture, transportation, civic needs, commercial business. We anticipate that these discussions will grow and shift over time as the initiative moves forward. Last but not least, we're developing an exciting speaker series event the morning of September 19th at the museum. So we'll have a diverse panel of national and local historians, civic leaders, design critics, all be here to explore how the most symbolic street in America can continue to evolve along with local and national needs. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation on the initiative. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. I'd first say that this is very exciting, and I believe everyone can recognize the historical opportunities before us, and I expect this to be an extraordinarily signature event or initiative for National Capitol Planning Commission and our partners. We look forward to working with you on it. With that, questions for Ms. Moulton on this exciting initiative? Ms. White.
I don't have a question so much as a comment, but I'm just delighted that this initiative is underway. Of course, I always love it when the Trust for Public Land studies are quoted. But so you got me there. But the correlation is so direct, and I think it's a really powerful correlation, the notion of well-maintained public space and the impact that has on private investment is just so clear in all of our work. And I think that also just the critical importance of Pennsylvania Avenue and its dual personality as a local street but also a national symbol for our country. And I really loved what you said about the permits for activating the space. I didn't think about that until you listed all of the jurisdictions. But just that simple example is really powerful for why this is important, to focus again on Pennsylvania Avenue and make it work and work well. So good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon.
First of all, again, I share the comments of my colleague here. I'm excited, I guess more so because I served on the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation forty years ago. Maybe I shouldn't say that on the record. Well, it's good to see things come back and to be relooked at. One of the issues, the membership of this group, is it somewhere I can find who's going to be, who I can talk to about my interest in the things that they get ready to do or new?
Oh, certainly. I can go back to the slide. We have 10 different agencies.
Yeah, I saw the agency, but I'm talking about people.
Oh, individuals, certainly, yeah. We have a specific representative from each agency.
I'm assuming the buildup will be similar, maybe, to the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation? We had similar shareholders on it.
Indeed. I think it will probably shift over time. Right now, we're starting with the federal and local agencies.
Right.
So Director McCarthy is sitting on this, from the city, as well as Sam Zimbabwe from DDOT.
Okay. There was a, the focus on economic vitality, which is, I think, is key, like cream, cash rules every action made, right? But the local concern for the street and the public use of it is very important to everyone, nationally and locally. And I think one of the examples of a problem area we developed, which the Freedom Plaza and how it's really become a valuable resource for us has sort of got mixed reviews, though the idea initially was, I think, a good one. So I hope we can, that's the kind of issue we'll be looking at, what we can do that will work and serve the public, but that will also bring the vitality we need for economic purposes. Also, is there any, are there any reasons in surveying these law firms for leaving that you know of? I remember breaking, cutting the ribbon when Covington and Burling moved into the building on Pennsylvania Avenue. I was actually there cutting ribbons. So now they're leaving, and is there a reason they give?
I'm not sure. The bid has actually been in closer contact with them at this point. My guess is that it's a lease rate issue. They probably got a better deal elsewhere.
Okay, well, they looked at, ours is 600 in some, you say, and the other areas are 700. So it looks like the areas they might be looking at could be more than what they have now.
It may very well be. That's a good point.
Because we don't know where they're going, but that would be very interesting to find out why they're leaving, whether that can be, you know, dealt with, and certainly who would replace them. You also mentioned the meeting on the 19th at the museum.
September 19th, yeah.
But is there a time?
Not yet.
Not, no time yet?
Not yet. It will be in the morning, and we'll certainly post information as soon as it's finalized.
Okay, because I think that I'm interested in hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, and then Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend the commission and the staff for taking this initiative to look at the Pennsylvania Avenue, all the issues related to the Pennsylvania Avenue. I think it's important, and I'm glad that this work is being done. I think it'll be important in that process, as you recognize, as your presentation said, Ms. Moulton, that there'd be a lot of public outreach and public hearings even on the draft proposals that may come forward. And I'm sure you're already, I mean, I'm sure you're already, but I hope you're already involving the stakeholders who reside there, both the businesses and the residents, the Pen Quarter Neighborhood Association, which represents both residents and businesses, the Downtown Bid represents businesses, and, you know, further out, as you do the outreach to the ANC, you know, the ANC that represents the area, and the Downtown Neighborhood Association and other stakeholder groups. Will the steering committees, so you'll be posting things, I assume, on this website, which is good as you develop them, but will the steering committee's meetings be open to the public and advertised, or are those just relegated, are those just exclusively the stakeholder, local and federal agencies that comprise that?
At this time, we've had one meeting in May, and we have another one tomorrow. They've been open just to the agencies. We've had local and federal agencies participate in those. I can't speak to the future ones. If it does grow over time, we can certainly consider that.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful in terms of just transparency. I think people feel that they're part of the development of the draft plans or whatever, whether it's operational or long-term vision planning, they will feel more of a stake in it and buy-in, and might avoid that procedural complaint down the road that we weren't involved, we didn't know. But do you envision that the long-term vision that's developed will be translated into amendments to the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan, which this commission, I guess, oversees as part of its role?
That may be something that happens down the road. It's something that we, the steering committee will be considering in the future. I anticipate it to be a part of the draft work plan that I mentioned, that we'll be presenting to the steering committee in September. It seems like we need to have some more conversations about it before we get to that point, though. But if it does head down that route, you're correct, the commission would be reviewing that.
Right. So I think it's a great initiative. I should note, Mr. Dixon, that I also was a representative of your successors for about 10 years on the PADC, from '85, I think, till its dissolution. Yes, we're all old. But I also just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the excellent work of the PADC in sparking the catalyst that has resulted in everything that we see today, and the work particularly of Joanne Newhouse, who is in our audience, who's a good friend, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGill.
Thank you. I'm very impressed, and a timely thing to do. I'm curious whether you've thought about including the Downtown Bid on the steering committee, because they're kind of a quasi-governmental agency, and they probably have the greatest sense of the pulse of the area and what makes it tick and what's good and bad about it.
We certainly have. What I've been told from a legal standpoint is that there may be some issues having a non-federal or local agency involved, but I think you're absolutely right about the local pulse. We certainly have been talking to them, and they have a huge amount of information on kind of the operations and maintenance along the avenue. So it's something we'll certainly consider in the future.
Chairman, I think that's important, to get them involved, because I think when we did ours, we did have a lot of private sector involvement. Maybe they were just lobbying us. But that will happen anyhow, so better to have them in the, at the table, maybe in some form, than to have them outside of the table talking. The other issue I want to raise, which is a very, I feel strongly about, hopefully there will be a lot of help to get housing, maybe some of this vacant space that's being freed up by these law firms. I got into a lot of trouble back then, because I was a big proponent on putting housing and people, so people could live downtown. In fact, I lost some of my major supporters, Oliver Caron, others in my political stuff, because I fought like the will that I wanted to be, housing above and hotel below, and oh, no, that won't work, because we make more money on businesses and la di da di da, because they move on like this. But people living downtown is, I'm not sure, some of the thousands that are coming in each month can all afford downtown at some point, but at least they'll make room outside of downtown if there's housing for those who can afford it downtown. Do a lot to keep it alive and make a difference, I think. So I'm hoping there'll be a lot of housing available for folks, maybe not affordable, but downtown.
Mr. Acosta, before you-
Just a quick point. I think the question about the participation of the business community and the residents is a very important part of our effort. In fact, we had asked Mr. Bradley to come speak to our steering committee to give us his views in terms of how this all kind of fits into that framework. Again, we're starting the public process later this month, and I think we really are thinking of this first phase as organizational part of our effort, trying to kind of nail down what we're going to focus on, and also kind of the timetable and the resources that will be required to do so amongst all the agencies involved. And I think when we also work with the public, I think we'll get a better sense of how we shall kind of develop our work program in a public fashion, and also the types of public meetings that will be helpful in kind of facilitating those discussions. So really, the first part of this is more an organizational step that we need to do to kind of get to kind of a bigger vision, visioning process for the street.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. I think that's it for this item, hearing no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moulton. We look forward to working with you. That was agenda item number two. That was part of the executive director's report. Agenda item number three is the legislative update, and Ms. Schuyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items to report. The first is Congress has passed, and the president signed on June 30th Senate Bill 1044, which is now Public Law 113123, and the new law directs the Secretary of the Interior to install at the World War II Memorial a suitable plaque or an inscription of the words "President Roosevelt prayed with the U.S. on the morning of D-Day." The law expressly provides that the requirements of this Commendative Works Act shall apply, so this commission will be part of the process, the design process. The second issue, we're going to the other end of Pennsylvania Avenue, is a passage by the city council of a Southwest Business Improvement District Amendment Act of 2013. This will create, lead to the creation of a Southwest Bid. The area in question overlaps with our ECO district area. The bill was passed by council in early June, signed by the mayor, and transmitted to the Hill at the end of June, and is expected to become law on August 12th of this year. That's-
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and we have only one item on the consent calendar. That item is the installation of telecommunications antennas and an equipment cabinet at the Liberty Loan Building. Mr. Dixon has moved, and Mr. Hart has seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no. It's passed. Agenda item number five, A, are the elements, are the amendments to the foreign missions and international organizations element of the comprehensive plan, we have Ms. DePonte. Welcome. Welcome.
Welcome. There you go. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here to present the Foreign Missions and International Organizations Element of the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol, also known as the COM Plan. The COM Plan is comprised of two components, both the federal and district elements. The district elements is developed by the D.C. government and was last amended in 2011 and really addresses traditional city planning issues such as land use, housing, and economic development. The federal elements is prepared by NCPC and was last updated in 2004. This provides a policy framework for the federal government in managing its operations and activities in the National Capitol region. Since 2010, we've been bringing individual elements to the commission for your review as an overall effort to update all of the elements and federal elements. May of 2013, the commission reviewed the foreign missions element and released the draft elements for a 60-day public comment period. We also hosted a public meeting to present the draft policy updates. Since then, we revised the element and now bringing the final draft for your review. We received multiple comments from six different groups. Included as Appendix Three of your EDR, you can review all of our comments as well as the staff responses. Common themes in the public comments were related to neighborhood character, the proposed foreign mission center, public access and security, cultural life, proposed zoning regulations, and data and mapping updates. Today, I'll be providing you some background information highlighting some of the big-picture changes to this element, really in their made-in-response to the comments that were received and also the updated data. So why are foreign missions important? Washington, D.C. is one of the most important diplomatic centers and foreign missions are vital to the U.S. in assisting diplomatic relations. It helps promote peace and stability and brings the nation together to, to address global challenges. In 1982, Congress enacted the Foreign Missions Act, giving the federal jurisdiction to provide secure and efficient operations of U.S. missions abroad as well as foreign missions in the U.S. To ensure reciprocal accommodations in foreign countries, the Act also established the Office of Foreign Missions to review and control the operations of foreign missions in the United States and also the benefits made to them. Reciprocity is important, because the Department of State enters into property exchange agreements with other countries where properties are provided to other foreign missions in exchange for Department of State receiving similar properties within their country. Foreign missions occupy buildings of all sizes, shapes, and ages, and facilities that house diplomatic functions are commonly referred as embassies. How are depending on their uses are known as ambassadors. Residences for the official home of the ambassador. Chanceries for the Office of Foreign Missions used for diplomatic purposes. Collectively and individually, these buildings really contribute to the vitality of Washington's neighborhoods and really add character to the city. So currently and historically, chanceries in D.C. have been located in the northwest quadrant of the district with a high concentration between 16th Street on the east and Wisconsin Avenue on the west. Today, there's 322 chanceries, 78 ambassador residences, and 31 international organizations. The Foreign Missions Act provide criteria for the location of chanceries in the District of Columbia. So as a matter of right, chanceries located in areas zone, commercial, industrial, waterfront, and mixed use. And also, chanceries can locate in areas outside of the matter of right, and these are areas zone medium-high to high-density residential as well as any other area. And this is subject to disapproval by the Foreign Mission Board of Zoning Adjustment, also known as the FMBZA. The FMBZA makes their determination on chancery application based on a set of six criteria as defined in the Foreign Missions Act and which considers both the local and federal interests. This is a public decision-making process that includes the input and participation of stakeholders, and it really helps balance the need for diplomatic activities as well as the concerns of the residential neighborhoods. The set of six criteria highlight the complex considerations when locating chanceries. In the 1983 COM Plan, NCPC developed an informal suitability test to help identify appropriate areas for low- and medium-density residential areas. Chanceries were considered suitable in squares that had one-third or more used for office, commercial, or non-residential uses. This was subject to disapproval by the FMBZA. This was commonly referred as the one-third, two-third method. Although this method was developed to be sensitive to neighborhoods, it kind of resulted in the unanticipated increase of chanceries in residential areas. This method has been implied inconsistently, hasn't been as effective, and was recommended to be removed in the 2004 COM Plan. And because of those reasons for this update, we are removing that method. Currently, the district is also considering a methodology in their zoning rewrite. As you recall from the previous slide, the municipal interest is one of the six criterias considered in the Foreign Missions Act. As part of your advisory authority under the Planning Act, the commission will have an opportunity to make recommendations at a later time on the consistency of the proposed zoning amendments to the COM Plan. So we've modified our goal statement to take into account two important responsibilities. One is our first priority to fulfill our diplomatic obligation to identify suitable locations for chanceries. And second, our goal is to ensure that chanceries are located in a way that's sensitive to the character and land use patterns of the city's neighborhoods. There are five themes, five policy areas in this element, which include the chancery development, locating chanceries, chancery facilities, ambassador residences, and international organizations. For purposes of clarity, the elements narrative has been reorganized to match the policy structure. And you'll see that the policies that you see today are very similar to the policies that you saw in May of 2013, and they can be found in Appendix Two of your EDR. Foreign missions make their chancery siting decisions for a variety of reasons. Proximity to foreign missions, neighborhood character, cost, access, security requirements. Policies in this element support future chancery development where they're sensitive to character of neighborhoods and also can contribute to the vibrant life of the nation's capital. There is a great cultural presence in the District of Columbia and foreign missions help add international character. One of my favorite time of the year is the annual Passport D.C., where chanceries actually open their doors to the public and you can really get a sense of another country's culture just by entering into their chanceries. Foreign governments continue to face difficulties finding properties that are viewed suitable for chancery use, and at the same time, Department of State faces a number of new challenges in its attempts to reciprocally acquire properties in other countries. The International Chancery Center, which is a foreign mission center located in Van Ness neighborhood, is a 47-acre purpose-built community designed to accommodate foreign missions. It's essentially built out and no additional chanceries can be accommodated. We have policies to, in place to identify areas appropriate for foreign missions, so we can continue to accommodate the demand for future chanceries. So I've previously talked about the process for locating chanceries. Now I'll talk about the important work going on today to plan for future chanceries. The Department of State is currently master-planning the long-term development of a proposed foreign mission center at the northwest portion of the former Walter Reed site, located on 16th Street Northwest. You might remember this project. It came to the commission this past April, and this is a prime development opportunity. And the new proposed foreign mission center is expected to follow a similar model as the International Chancery Center with a long-term lease model. The policies in our element give priority consideration for the location of chancery facilities at the proposed foreign mission center as well as matter-of-right areas. The policy area for chancery facilities provide guidance on urban design, historic preservation, access, and open space in parkland. These policies generally remain the same as a policy for this policy area since May of 2013. However, with some of the comments regarding to security and access and also for clarity purposes, we revised a few of these policies. Common themes in these policy address native architectural style, maintenance concerns, neighborhood character, the protection of historic resources, obstructions to public space, and also sustainable site and building design. Ambassador residences are located in the District of Columbia, Maryland, and also northern Virginia suburbs. Also, international organizations prefer high-density offices and mixed-use areas that are convenient to federal offices and other organizations. Common theme to both of these policy areas are that to locate them in compatible land uses and also within the District of Columbia. Both of these policy areas generally remain the same since the last COM Plan update. It is the executive director's recommendation that the commission approves the final adoption of the updated policies in the Foreign Missions and International Organizations element and holds the policies in abeyance until final adoption of the federal elements of the COM Plan. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take your questions. We also have representatives from Department of State Office of Foreign Mission, Cliff C. Groves, if you guys have any other questions directed to him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discussion among commission members or questions? Mr. McGill.
I'm curious about whether there's any authority or emphasis on whomever is in charge on controlling the size of the embassies, because it seems to me that the International Center right now, I think I was trying to count quickly as you showed the picture, and I think on the 47 acres there are probably 16 embassies. So that averages three acres per embassy. It seems to me that the advantage of having a separate area carved out, as they're going to do in Walter Reed, is also a disadvantage in that it encourages new embassy buildings that are trying to outdo their neighbors and take up more room than necessary. And the result of that is that the space reserved for future embassies does not accommodate as many as are needed.
Yeah, that's a great question. For the International Chancery Center, it's great, because the commission actually gets to review the master plan, just like for the Walter Reed site. We get to see about how many chanceries can be located, and these are some of the things that we look into, especially for the future Walter Reed Foreign Mission Center.
But so who? Is there an authority in place that says you shouldn't build a bigger embassy than this?
I suggest maybe that the State Department rep can address that question.
Well, I think there are two answers to that. One is at the Chancery Center, the existing Chancery Center, this body reviews those applications almost exclusively. But perhaps our real answer to that is, you know, U.S. embassies, we certainly would not be able to survive a cap of size in that regard for the way in which we build and operate our missions. So I think we, we would certainly be uncomfortable with saying that there is a cap. I understand your point about that. We certainly encourage countries to build or to acquire properties that meet both their current needs as well as their projected needs, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a second. And identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cliff C. Groves, Department of State.
Yes, sir.
It was a time, we talked about trying to define some type of structures that would accommodate smaller spaces. I don't know whether that ever went, probably nowhere, because there are a lot of smaller countries that really cannot handle these larger structures and the cost of them. And there was some talk about trying to create at least some space or some place, I don't know if Walter Reed would do it, but where there could be certain amount of places that would be defined as smaller units, you know, maybe kind of a rowhouse kind of, whatever, that would be, certainly speak well for the country, but give the smaller, less affluent countries opportunity to come in and be located, and then they wouldn't be in the community looking for houses and places to be where there's a problem. So I don't know if that would be resurrected with the Walter Reed consideration, but I guess it may have some merit. I don't know. Maybe, maybe not.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In general, I think that there are a lot of, there's a lot of good language in the, in the, in the draft foreign missions element, particularly encouraging new chanceries to locate in matter-of-right areas and in the new chancery complex and discouraging chanceries from locating in primarily residential neighborhoods. As you, as you know from our discussions when I saw this draft a few weeks ago, I was initially concerned about the commission dropping the one-third, two, not necessarily the one-third, two-third methodology, but a methodology that would help define what is an essentially residential neighborhood consistent with the Foreign Missions Act. This commission and its staff was very instrumental in developing the, the one-third, two-third methodology and whether it's served the city and the State Department and the federal interest and local interest. Well, I'm not, I'm not sure I see the reference that it led to some unintended consequences. So I guess I would note, as the, as the, as the EDR notes, that there is a methodology, there is a similar methodology, 50%, that's in the existing proposed zoning regulations rewrite that the zoning commission is considering. And that is supported by the, that is the mayor's office, the planning proposal, and the, it's generally supported by the neighborhood most impacted, the residential neighborhood most impacted by the location of chanceries, and that's the Sheridan Calorama neighborhood that's had a longstanding concern about, about new chanceries locating in their neighborhood. Because chanceries after all are, as we, as the report, as the EDR mentions, they're the office uses. They're not, they're not the residential. Chanceries are office uses, so when they locate in residential zones, there are impacts that need to be taken into account. So in general, I guess I'm supportive of all the language that's, that's, I think, very helpful, encouraging chancery, new chanceries to locate at the new Walter Reed campus, 43 and a half acres there, and in matter-of-right areas. I'm somewhat concerned that, that this commission may be, the commission will be reviewing, the zoning commission and this commission will be reviewing the, the proposed methodology that's in the, in the, in the zoning rewrite. I'm a little bit concerned about a recent staff letter that was sent to the zoning commission that said that the methodology, that the proposed chancery, that the proposed chancery provisions there are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't know if they were talking about with the existing comprehensive plan. I don't know if they were talking about the existing one-third, two-third, but I'm just a little bit concerned about, about this commission taking that position. But I think there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good, good provisions here, and I'm prepared to support this new draft today.
Thank you. We'll talk about that. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the EDR? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's passed. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Miller. Agenda item number six, A, is an information presentation on the urban design element of the comprehensive plan. We have Ms. Kempf. We have Ms. Kempf.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here to give you a brief update on the status of the urban design element. The purpose of the presentation today is meant to be more of an overview, so we're not going to get into any specific policy prescriptions. We're going to talk about general issues, resources, and the overall direction for the element. As you may recall, the urban design element is new to our federal elements. The district has an urban design element which provides important guidance about the city's many commercial areas and residential areas. Our focus is more on those elements that contribute to the image and functions of federal government and our images as the national capital. We prepared a draft urban design element under the direction of a task force in 2011 and 2012, and that draft was released in 2012 for a 60-day public comment period. Right about that time, we were directed to undertake the height study, which we understood would contain relevant technical information, visual modeling study, and extensive public outreach. We also had some direction from the Oversight Committee on Government and Reform as to national interests in the form and character of the city, with a particular focus on the Monumental Core and the character of the LaFonte Plan area. So we placed the element on hold at that time until we completed that important work. While much of the discussion during the height study was about building height, we also had a pretty robust conversation about federal and national interests in the form and character of the city and our interest in its symbolic image. So, and then the final commission recommendations and reported included a fairly substantial discussion about the character of the Monumental Core, the LaFonte Plan city, as well as recommendation to undertake view shed protections within the comprehensive plan. And so today, we're prepared, now that that study is complete, we're prepared to move forward with the element, take under consideration the guidance of the 2012 task force, as well as some of the lessons that we learned from the height study. In terms of the presentation today, we're going to spend just a moment talking about urban design and how we're thinking about it for this element. The proposed element will include two policy sections, one on the form and character of the nation's capital. This includes a symbolic element, public realm, natural setting. These were some of the, this is the area where we're looking most closely for revisions based on the height work. And so I'm going to spend most of the time today talking about this policy section. A second policy section under number three, federal facilities and property, this is largely the same from our 2012 draft. This is a much more targeted focus about federal facilities and property throughout the city and the region. And I'm not going to spend too much time on this today, again, because it's largely unchanged. And then we'll talk about next steps. Okay, so let's get into the fun stuff. What is urban design? For me, it's one of those terms, a bit like sustainability, in that it seems to me a lot of different things to different people. So for the purposes of this presentation, urban design is the practice of shaping the built environment of a city, or we're a small town for that matter. It brings together a number of disciplines who look at the built and natural environment, perhaps through a different lens, architecture, landscape architecture, historic preservation, urban planning. For purposes of this element, we're thinking of it in two scales, the larger scale, which addresses entire streetscapes, public space systems, urban systems, and the smaller scale, which addresses the on-the-ground pedestrian experience. In our view, urban design must establish functional, lively, and engaging public spaces. And urban design and policy must meet these objectives, but also a bit of a higher standard. As the nation's capital and one of the great planned cities in the world, the shape of our cityscape is strongly linked to our image and our character. The quality of our urban design creates impressions for our visitors, and engaging people in the public realm is deep-rooted in our values in American civic life, and the original plans for our city reinforce these goals. For example, in a few very well-known instances in history, the course of our nation's collective consciousness really changed through civic engagement in our most important public settings. And for many Americans, this is fixed in the mind what Washington can represent in terms of our aspirations and where we want to go as a country. It's quite powerful. Our experience in the public realm can occur in everyday ways as well. We have spaces that create a sense of awe, spaces that envy a bit more human interaction. I guess it all sort of goes out the door in soccer season, I don't know. But the point is, we want to really think about the visual and the functional qualities of our public spaces, not only for the image of our country, but for the everyday experiences of people, which I think is very well-integrated into the way that we think about urban design in our city. So shifting gears a bit, by way of introduction to this element, it's going to be a much more visual document than you're probably accustomed to in the other elements. We're preparing an introduction that will highlight some of the key elements of our urban design framework. I think when people think about the urban design of the city, they think about that historic plan that I just showed you. So I guess I'm guilty of it, too. I showed the historic plan, and I think that's very important. But this is also an innovative urban design framework. It's relevant. It includes a system of parks and open spaces that shape the experiences of people, and this happens in both subtle and formative ways. And so part of the work of the urban design element is to sort of translate this, not in terms of the historic significance of each of the components, but why they're still meaningful today, and they are. One of the things that we learned during the height work is that some list of definitions or vocabulary words with illustrations would be very helpful, so that we can ensure that not only professionals, but as well as lay folks who are interested in the planning of their city can all be using a common vocabulary. So these are just some examples of the kinds of illustrations that we're considering for our introductory section. Okay, so moving on to this first policy section, and again, I'm going to spend the most time here. The purpose is really to describe those elements of form and character that contribute to our image as the nation's capital, and we're thinking of this in three layers, if you will. The first thinks about those sort of symbolic elements. This is probably where we spent a lot of time during the height work, thinking about those characteristics that contribute to those symbols and icons that really make our capital city distinct. The character of the Monumental Core, I've already talked about this, this was an area that we focused on quite a bit during the height study. Second, the urban design framework of the city. This may include policies about the public realm and streetscapes in those areas that are really central to national interests. And then the third is the natural setting. We do have a parks and open space element, so I'll give this somewhat of a light touch here, but the natural environment is a character-defining aspect of our nation's capital, so we think it's an important part of understanding sort of the urban design components here. Okay, so this is an overview, so we just wanted to highlight five representative examples of some of those attributes and resources that really contribute to our image as a nation's capital. This is by no means meant to be comprehensive. I'll be curious to see if you think I caught the right ones. But again, just to get you thinking again about this element. First is a very old urban design principle, which is the idea that we locate important places with respect to topography and orientation to the city plan. One of the things that makes our plan so special is topography. I think it's something that's little understood, but when you cross a bridge or have a sense of awe, I think when you see an object at the end of a street, it's sometimes about the building itself, but oftentimes it's actually about the topography and how that's influencing our perspective. So I'm going on. You can see the topographic bowl there, the hillside, in red and orange, and then just over to the right, you see Jenkins Hill, which is a slightly elevated area where we located our US Capitol. So, you know, a lot of medieval towns have their church in a square, and we have our people's house on a hill. And it was important to link the American experiment with the oldest of republican ideals and architecture when we were first laying out this plan. So this was a very important principle for us, both for inspiration as well as credibility for the new nation. This is a principle we applied to the memorials and museums master plan urban design framework, which really looked at where we can locate future memorials and future museums with respect to topography, with respect to the symbolic connections and within our original plan. And this is our urban design framework. And as you can see, we really focused on the axis of the US Capitol, as well as the White House, and how they link to the important topographical elements to the south, the water and the hillside to the north. So we aren't the only city that locate important buildings with respect to topography. A town I really like a lot is Nashville, Tennessee, and they have, I don't know if y'all have been, but they have their Capitol situated in front of a very large green park. They also have a Sheridan in there in their background, which is not a condition that we have here in DC. Our US Capitol is set against a sky plane, and that sky canvas reinforces the importance of a symbolic urban design context. I don't know if y'all had a chance to see the 60 Minutes episode about the restoration of the dome. It was really interesting. It was December of last year, but the architect of the Capitol basically described all of the technical work that is going into thinking about the dome and the restoration work, the historic preservation issues. But anyway, the leadership in the House and Senate talked about the importance of the dome as a symbol for this country. And I think what I took from that is, it's not just architecture, it's something that continues to mean something to people, and I certainly experience that when I have relatives or friends coming in from out of town. It's a special place. And creating an urban design consideration that takes that into account, I think, is a challenge for us to think through. But this brings us to our example two, which is our skyline, our picturesque and symbolic skyline, that emphasizes the US Capitol, the Washington Monument, and some of our other important civic landmarks. And this is, was a very important consideration during the height work, and probably makes this city one of the most distinctive and recognizable in the world because of its focus. And this doesn't just, isn't just limited to sort of the Monumental Core area, the cathedral is another defining element. We heard from a lot of residents that one of the things that they really like about the city is a skyline that emphasizes these important objects. Even the nighttime sky has a distinctive look. The US Capitol, Washington Monument, Lincoln have sort of, there's a hierarchy of a lighting scheme, if you will, that's most, I think, visible from the Monumental Core. I don't know if you've ever flown in at night on Ronald Reagan National Airport, but it's sort of right there. Anyway, so that's finishing up the skyline work. Example three, view sheds, that visual order we were just talking about from a skyline perspective can also be experienced right at the street. It orients viewers to special places. It's sort of, we have a lot of views because of our plan for the city and because of the Hyde Act, but it's a distinguishing element that really creates sort of a sense of drama when you're actually within the city and moving around. Understanding elements that contribute to the visual quality of the view shed is something that we're investigating. As we mentioned, our final adopted height recommendations included view shed protections within the comprehensive plan, so we're considering what that might look like and where that would be located, and we're focusing on just a handful of sites that are really strongly linked to national interests. And so I would say, just as a starting game, that it's sort of about the object, the visibility of the object at the end of the view, if there is one, but it's also about the on-the-ground pedestrian experience and the urban design character of the street itself. One of the most common things that we heard during the height study, particularly from residents, was how much they enjoy walking around DC. We would hear words like "it feels light," "it feels open," and I think those are very good terms, that there are also urban design qualities that make that sort of possible, and that's something that we're thinking about in the context of the urban design element. So last one here on view sheds. Some of our more important view sheds have sort of a consistent street wall and building line, sort of symmetrical look. This is as much about the leadership and guidance from the local zoning commission that look at this as at a much finer grain detail than the Hyde Act. I mean, the Hyde Act is a piece of it, but this really is a contribution of local zoning, the Office of Planning. Okay, part four, the character of the Monumental Core. I've talked about this a bit. You know, I figure if it appears on your nation's currency, it's important, and we have a lot of buildings that appear on our dollar bills within the Monumental Core. You know, we really think about the Monumental Core as gracious settings in and around important civic and cultural buildings. The form and character of the Monumental Core, again, was pretty carefully documented during our heights study. The National Mall is an important part of our Monumental Core. This is a place that serves, of course, for park services, but it is also an image-defining element within our city. This is a place where so many Americans come to visit, and that is meaningful to them. We have a National Mall plan that was approved several years ago that has a lot of guidance that will be relevant to our urban design elements, so that will help us, I think, inform our decisions within the document. There are, I don't want to paint too pretty of a picture, I think there are a lot of really important challenges with planning for the Monumental Core, infusing street-life character within some of these spaces, creating a good pedestrian experience. And the Monumental Core framework plan asserted a vision for placemaking opportunities, public realm improvements, and a lot of other aspects that improve the visual and functional qualities of this space. So we're trying to draw some lessons from this project as well in our thinking about the public realm, particularly in and around public buildings. Finally, number five, this Capitol really is set in natural beauty. Again, we have a parks and open space element, so we're only going to take this to a certain level, but in some ways, the urban design framework of the city is about bringing nature and natural qualities and bringing them into our urban fabric, which is a pretty powerful and special quality. The LaFonte Plan gives us all of those squares and circles and many, many park spaces. These can be places of civic identity for neighborhoods, placemaking, natural areas, they can serve for parks, spaces, and all of these are important pieces of urban design. The natural setting, though, extends well beyond the LaFonte City and into the city as well as the region. We have a lot of really lovely green settings around our national resources. So before moving on, I wanted to spend a moment highlighting a sampling of some of the sort of key challenges and tensions that are important for an urban design element. First, let me just say, we're not planning on having any prescriptive guidance about architectural style or, you know, detailed design guidance related to artistry or anything like that, but it's worth a starting principle that says that the creative contributions of each generation is important for our nation's capital, that we're a vital and evolving city. We have an urban design framework that can accommodate both the old and the new, and we must find opportunities for creativity and innovation, and I think we do, and this is vital to our nation's image. You know, there are cities like Williamsburg that sort of so closely attach their architectural identity to a certain point in time, and I don't think that that's our vision for this city. I think we want to have a rich diversity within our urban fabric. We care very much about ensuring that the urban design framework itself, that system of public spaces and streets remains intact, but we believe that the components within that system can provide for a pretty rich diversity. A related issue is adaptability within the public realm. I think one of the hallmarks of a successful public space is adaptability and is versatility. We talk a lot about this with our memorial designs. How do you balance sacred space and other public uses? And this is important for an urban park system and an urban setting, is something that is important for urban design. Lastly, and this is an issue our commission knows so well, urban design and security continues to be a central tension, and I think we're interested absolutely in creating safe spaces for people, for our federal agencies, but also trying to preserve the visual quality of the space. You heard about that a bit with Pennsylvania Avenue and the planning work that's going on there. on there, figuring out how to integrate these elements. I actually think that the security looks better on the Washington Monument there on the right. That's sort of the before and after shot, anyway. Lastly, federal development orienting sort of itself in an urban, urban setting, creating streetscape and street-level experiences that are inviting to people, that make people want to be in and around that building. I think GSA has shown so much leadership in this area, really encouraging agencies to think through how to, how to incorporate retail and other active uses so that they better fit within, within the urban setting around them, if, if, if the mission supports it. Okay, so again, the second session, section is much like the, the first. The, the central goal, I think, with this section is incorporating sound urban design and planning principles for federal facilities that are located within the surrounding community. This is something that our, the plan review staff here thinks through very carefully each month, trying to ensure that agency goals are met, not only for their mission, but also for the comfort of federal employees, but also that the, they take into consideration the goals for the surrounding community and neighborhood. And this applies not only at a district-wide scale, but absolutely regionally as well. We have a lot of campuses and federal facilities that are located in urban areas and suburban areas, and we hope that this part of the element will give us just some general principles for the kinds of planning and urban design questions that we hope agencies will consider when they locate in, in a community. So key goals here are actually somewhat of a mirror, though at a different level from what we've already discussed. It's the pedestrian experience and amenities in and around federal buildings and grounds. Again, I think GSA has really shown a lot of leadership in this area and, and very forward-thinking strategies for how to, how to do that, incorporating high-quality materials, best practices, environment, and environmental stewardship. And again, responding to the context of the, of the surrounding community, including urban design and related planning goals. So in terms of our plans for the urban design element, what we'd like to do is spend the next couple of months developing some online outreach about some of the key issues that we've talked about, the key sort of planning and urban design matters that we think would be most interested, interest, would be of most interest to the public. If there's any you or your staff would like to meet and sit down and talk about the urban design policies and how they might work for your agency, or you want to bring some of your agency-wide issues to the element, we'd welcome one-on-one consultations with you. We'd like to bring the draft policies back to the commission in the fall for a second public round, 60-day public comment period. We'll have a public event in the fall, as we do with all of our comprehensive plan elements, and our goal is for final adoption in the winter of 2014, this year, this winter. Did I, no, 14. Don't, don't scare me. We're, we're getting it done this year. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any comments on the urban design element.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp. Very good, as, as always, discussion, questions. Ms. White.
Great presentation. I love that you asked the question, "What is urban design?" and gave a definition, and I was really pleased to see that you had placemaking as a reference in the presentation. And in the work I do, I'm seeing a huge resurgence in the interest of creative placemaking, and, you know, it was a big buzzword in the 90s, and it's sort of faded away, and it's come back with a vengeance. And I think there's real, deep, meaningful work being done at the foundation level. Kresge Foundation, for instance, has just funded a national look at creative placemaking and going really deep in terms of what does that really mean? Who owns public space? Who is it for? How do you get there? What's the process? And I think that what you described builds on those really important elements of thinking about urban design and the importance of public space. So I compliment you for that. I'll pass along the information. There's also a really interesting exhibit right now called "Who Really Owns Public Spaces?" that the American Institute of Architecture, New York Center for Architecture is putting on. And it's a very provocative question about the role of public space and how that's changing, whether it's a ceremonial space or a park, but I think it would really help inform the work. So I'm really delighted about the way you're thinking about this, and, you know, keep going and let me know how we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McGill. I'm curious if you, you have a section, I, I mean, I really like what you're doing, and I'm curious if you have a section emphasizing the importance of federal design being of high quality to enhance the public realm? Because it seems to me there's, there's now, and, you know, with, in the very contentious atmosphere that exists in Washington, there are beginning to be questions asked about, "Well, should we really spend that much money on good design?"
I think that would be a wonderful question for that second section. We're interested in the space around the buildings, but also the building itself, so absolutely.
And then another, another topic, when I was in San Francisco, the, the city planning department had this very talented architect planner who did cartoon movies about architecture. And he did one one time where he showed design judges, and they were looking at individual buildings that were more traditional in style and simple, and say, "Oh, how mundane, how boring." And then they saw these individual pieces of sculpture, like the Transamerica Pyramid, and said, "Oh, how exciting." But they were shown individually, and then they were shown together. And the individual mundane buildings, when shown together, had a common facade line, a common roof line, and created a sense of civic place, whereas the individual pieces of sculpture, when shown together, looked like a hodgepodge. So in Washington, D.C., the, the examples of these two alternative approaches are Constitution Avenue and Independence Avenue. Because Independence Avenue has, except for the Smithsonian Castle Complex, has no interrelationship among buildings whatsoever. So there's also this tension between an individual statement that's very dramatic and bold and striking versus the need to fit into a context, and I'm curious if you go into that.
We're very interested, probably not that eloquently yet, we're very interested in the composition of spaces. I think that's important in the view shed work particularly, because you have a lot of elements, not only buildings, but trees and streetscape elements, that together create a backdrop for a particular view that reinforces the object at the end of it. So I think from that perspective, absolutely, and, and it's something that we heard quite a bit during the height work, that, that the, that the buildings and all of the built and natural elements have to work together almost as a chorus, but I do think that that's a tension. I think that's a tension when you think about view shed protection, for example. So I don't know that we've come to a policy, but I think that's a provocative question that we'd have to think through. Part of what we'd like to do is convey some of the attributes that we think are important and why, so the urban design conditions and what that means. Putting it into a policy level is the trick.
True.
Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Kemp, for that excellent presentation. I noticed when you, at least in this presentation and in the visuals, when you're talking about the tensions and challenges and regional context, you didn't show the view from the mall of Arlington County, those raw, tall buildings and what that impact. I think it would be important to acknowledge that elephant in the room and, and the challenges and threats, or, and even threats to the district's economy that that presents. It, it, it would, it would be a useful picture, I think, to have in this urban design when you're looking at a region and what it affects on the surrounding community.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last item on our agenda is Agenda Item Number 6B. It's an information presentation on the National Air and Space Museum Comprehensive Facilities Master Plan. And Ms. Kelly.
Good afternoon. Get the PowerPoint up here. The Smithsonian Institution is here today, as the chairman noted, to inform you on their facilities master planning effort for the National Air and Space Museum, which comprises of three facilities: the main museum building on the National Mall, the museum and support buildings at Dulles, and the museum storage buildings known as the Garber Facility in Sutland, Maryland. The Smithsonian's facility master plan evaluates all three facilities for future needs and improvements. It is anticipated that the Smithsonian will submit a master plan for the Dulles facility as well as a future master plan for the Sutland site to the commission at a later date. Today, the Smithsonian will primarily, primarily focus on the first major project at the museum building on the Mall, as well as recommendations for the Dulles site. So I'd like to introduce Ann Trowbridge, who is the Associate Director for Planning at the Smithsonian, to do the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome back, Ms. Trowbridge.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Bryant, members of the commission, and the public. We are very pleased to be here to brief you on our facilities development plan and on the findings of a feasibility conducted last fall to investigate the first project in that, the revitalization of our National Mall building focused on its exterior envelope and its mechanical systems. As Cheryl noted, we have three sites. The Udvar-Hazy Center, completed about three or four years ago at the site of the Dulles Airport. We are now referring to the larger site there as our Dulles Collection Center. We have our National Mall building, and we have our Garber Facility in Sutland, Maryland. So I think we have you all covered. The focus at Udvar-Hazy is to increase the storage capacity at that site. We lease close to 200 acres from the MOA and FAA, who have jurisdiction there, and we would like to develop additional collections, storage facilities there, as well as make the existing hangar and facilities more sustainable and the landscape more sustainable. The National Mall is a combination of, of the revitalization of what we have. It is one of our most visited museums, 7 million visitors per year. On a peak day, we can get close to 100,000 people visiting in one day. We will be also revitalizing the galleries there as part of our Capitol campaign for private donations. Our intent at, at Garber is to locate, relocate NASM's facilities from Garber to Dulles. Some of those collections have already moved to the Hazy Center. Others need more storage space built out at Dulles before they could move. That will enable us to tear down metal buildings, which were built, some of them 50 or more years ago, as temporary storage. One of them collapsed in the Snowmageddon four years ago. We've reinforced them since, so we don't think that would happen again, but, but they're not really good collection, storage buildings for us. So that will enable us to do a comprehensive redevelopment of the Sutland site that will, can expand onto the land vacated by Garber. A little background on the National Mall building. It was quite a few years in the planning by the time Congress appropriated $41 million for its construction. Quite a lot of value engineering was required and a, an expedited schedule to complete it in time for opening in July 1st, 1776. Since then, there've been a couple of major projects on the exterior. We've done some major work on the stone facade, essentially joint repointing and caulking. We also replaced skylights and window walls and added vestibules in 1997 to 2001. That project was accepted ironically on 9/11/2001, so it did not, it does not meet current more stringent requirements. As with many of our buildings built in the 70s and 80s, the mechanical systems are nearing the, their useful life, perhaps beyond their useful life. Our stone facade is the primary and exclusive weather barrier to this building. It is in trouble. It is, was designed to be at most an inch and a half thick. In places, it is down towards an inch, and we have to replace it. So that is the, those are the two big projects that we are proposing for the Mall building. As part of this, we will also do a few changes to the interior, really very few, mainly the exhibit galleries that will be privately funded, some revitalization of some of our basement security spaces and the like. We also have the terraces outside the building, some of which serve as green roofs to the larger parking garage below. About 10 years or so away, we are proposing to replace the current restaurant building at the east end of the building with a two-story addition that would incorporate a similarly-sized restaurant on the first floor and a new education center above. Below that, the loading area would be redesigned to take larger trucks and otherwise serve us better. This plan shows some of the key elements. Number one, the revitalization of the existing building. Two, the east end replacement of the restaurant with the education wing and restaurant. That's probably 10 years away. And number three, we'd like to add vestibules. We have an existing vestibule that was put in in the circa 2001 skylight and window wall replacement. We'd like to redo that. We have at this museum magnetometers, which, if, if you see in this picture, they are in the exhibit space of the Milestones for Flight Gallery. We'd like to move those out into a more commodious vestibule so that the visitor experience to our premier gallery is maintained better. Number four on this represents all of these landscape terraces, which will be part of our master plan for the site. We are, we'll do some concept design for that as part of this upcoming envelope study. The actual timing for their implementation will be, something we'll determine based on that study. We've taken into account our location on, on the National Mall in, in planning this replacement of, of the restaurant wing. As you can see, the, the original building was laid out to align with the entrance to the National Gallery. the National Gallery of Art. I think that value engineering made it a little shorter than their west, west building. Our facade also echoes the National Gallery's in-and-out, um, facade configuration. This is a, a diagram of, of what a two-story addition, um, might, uh, be at the east end of the building. This addition could be, have a broader or a narrower attachment to the existing because there's, there's a certain amount of room out here on the east end of the site, the loading entrances in this location here. We've also shown, um, vestibules on the north and south sides, perhaps some additional shading for people waiting, uh, the blue areas being the new here. We're showing little bits of addition on, on the third floor at a much later date, probably more in the 20-year timeframe. We'd like to be able to expand our office level to incorporate some more shared spaces in, in these locations. There currently are outdoor terraces, uh, at the third floor level, which is all staff. And this gives you a, a sort of a diagram of how this might all stack, um, together. The circulation core, um, depicted here, um, is important because our second floor, uh, galleries currently are, uh, we feel underserved in terms of exit capacity and convenience. We're also, uh, discussing the, uh, option for a third entrance from Independence Avenue. This would give us a great deal more flexibility, particularly for special events and evening programs when we now have, uh, some conflicts, when we have the, uh, those going on all at once. The original landscape plan of, for the project, um, you can see, uh, is a more sparse landscape than we currently have. Our, our current landscape has, whoops, um, overgrown a bit to obscure views in through the glazed, uh, windows to the galleries. The landscape plan originally was fairly, um, architectural in that it, it tended to emphasize the lines en massing of the building. What we'd like to do, as we develop a landscape concept in the upcoming concept design for the envelope, is to, um, marry that reinforcement of the architecture and the views of the building with, um, some themed gardens that, um, uh, Smithsonian Gardens would curate that would both communicate, um, some of the science that might be related to, um, the Air and Space Museum in terms of, uh, survival in, in, uh, different environments and the like, as well as, as visual, um, relationships to flight and, uh, space images. We are proposing, uh, as part of the envelope, uh, study, uh, to meet the current, um, DDOE stormwater requirements to attain 50% of the, um, major rainfall and therefore would likely have two, uh, large 100,000 gallon cisterns at the east and west ends of the site. The terraces, uh, some of them, uh, serve as green roofs to the parking and mechanical spaces, loading spaces below, um, and we have some, uh, at-grade, um, terrace gardens as well. In, in redeveloping these gardens, we will be capturing the rainwater. We will have, uh, soil mixes in the planters that absorb and, and hold more rainwater than currently. And, and our plant selection will similarly, um, take advantage of the rain garden potential of the lower, um, terraces and the drier, uh, environment of the upper ones. Briefly to describe the Dulles Collection Center, Udvar-Hazy, uh, site, this is the current display hangar. The airport is to the right of, of this aerial, which is to the north. The parking lot, this is the restoration hangar. This white building is, is the second phase of the project completed about three or four years ago, which is primarily behind-the-scenes conservation and storage of what we call medium and small objects. They can fit in a pickup truck and, including our refrigerated space suit storage is, is there. This, we lease from MOI, uh, ground that essentially covers all of this area. And our intent is to, um, build both adjacent storage to the current Hazy building, as well as develop, uh, one of the larger builder, buildable sites in, in this wooded area for what we're calling our large object prototype. We will also, uh, we would also like to make our parking lot, uh, and turf areas more sustainable as, uh, through landscape projects there. And we will be doing, um, projects, uh, to revitalize the current building, which is, as it ages. We've taken into account in our planning for buildable sites, some of the natural features. These are the lower, more wet areas of the site. As, as a site at an airport, we have certain constraints, uh, related to not creating additional attractions for, for birds that get in cotton airplanes and some other restrictions. But within those, we, we, we are, um, uh, planning sustainable, uh, site development. These, uh, pinkish hatched areas represent, um, identified potential building sites. Our proposal is to first start with the, um, expansion of the existing Udvar-Hazy Building to the south. We're currently embarking on a feasibility study that will test whether it makes sense to build a piece of this storage, or maybe more than a piece, maybe all of it, um, to accommodate, uh, artifacts and exhibit props from the Mall Museum that have to move out during that revitalization process. The, uh, large object prototype, we don't, uh, know exactly when we would start construction of that. It may follow completion of all of the, um, revitalization at the Mall. Uh, it's possible that it could start earlier, um, with some, uh, other financing strategies we're exploring. We're, our long-term objective is to reduce our reliance on leased, uh, collection storage base, and this, um, project is key to being able to do that. We engaged the firm of Quinn Evans. They're here, if you have questions today, to do the feasibility study for the envelope and the building systems. These two elements are linked because, um, the way our building is constructed, uh, the stone is, the thin stone is mounted on, um, lightweight steel supports. There's no concrete masonry backup wall behind it as, as at the National Gallery of Art, um, which also has stone two or three times as thick. That outside, um, support of the stone forms a plenum, uh, for delivering our air conditioning. So dismantling that outside stone and replacing and, um, redoing mechanical systems, uh, go hand in hand. In studying in detail the stone, if any of you have driven by on Seventh Street or Independence, particularly in raking light, you can see the severe cupping and some of the cracking that is occurring, um, throughout the building. 9% of the stones of this facade are severely cupped. Quinn Evans has, has, um, physically pulled apart pieces of our wall, looked at, uh, the existing conditions, studied a number of options for cladding, um, and for, um, sustainable, uh, energy-saving systems that they will be further, uh, testing in this upcoming concept design. We will come back to you probably, um, next, um, December with, uh, some proposed options for the stone cladding. We are exploring both, um, thicker version of the current stone, but also, uh, use of granite with, in a similar thickness, granite being much, much more, um, strong as a stone. You can see, we've, we've benefited from, um, sharing our knowledge, uh, the knowledge of the National Gallery of Art, um, and their experience on their project. They did not replace stone. They did, did, um, they reinstalled their, their three-inch thick stone. We, uh, will need to, because of this, you can see the lightweight framework that our, our building, um, has from this original construction photo. We, we will need to, uh, replace ours. So it's a little bit like living across the, um, street from the, the, one of the three little pigs, and we live across the street from the one that had the brick house, and I think we have the Styx, Styx House. So, um, with that, if you have, uh, questions, I'm, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Trobridge, very much. You have a lot of work to do ahead.
We do. By the time we finish, we will, we will feel like we have built another museum.
And we look forward to seeing a lot of you. Are there questions or comments from Ms. Trobridge on the, the path forward for the Air and Space Museum?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. McGill?
What is the other half building used for at the Garber Facility? You said you had 19 and a half.
That's a building that, um, Air and Space shares with American history. That's why I think we call it half a building. There, there are a few other, um, unhappy tenants at Garber. American history, the Postal Museum, and I think natural history has a few things in buildings there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the last item on our, uh, agenda. That concludes our open session. Are there any last-minute, uh, comments or questions, uh, before we adjourn? Hearing none, we are adjourned.